Just a snapshot really of the things that happened over the last nine years. I think one of the things that came across there was the message from Heather Goodwin talking about the fight and spirit, but that's exactly what we had, I think, that kept us going from 2010 onwards to today is that fight and spirit. We're going to leave much more of that. I think everybody's got a copy of The Midterm Financial Plan. It's attached to you. You'll see The Midterm Financial Plan. I was actually quite surprised that nobody picked it up. I mean, it sets out in real detail the issues and problems that we face. It gives us lots of information around the funding reductions and things that we have as problems in terms of... It clearly is an important document and I just urge everybody to read that. It went to council about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and I'd asked everybody to have a look at it. The underlying issue for us as a city is that, you know, and there's no way of, you know, dressing this up. We've dealt with £400 million, we're over £400 million with the cuts since 2010. And as I've just set out, the problems that we face are now over. We still have to find those commitments that we made this year. And as I said, what we do know is by 2020, 21, at least another 25, you'll have seen the announcements made by the Chancellor just before the prooration of Parliament where he talked about his investments and again, usually places that austerity is over and going to invest. I think the only thing that we can see out of that is potentially money for us in terms of the Better Care Fund. We were frightened about not getting the Better Care Fund for 2020, 21, and that would have really crippled us. But it looks like they haven't yet agreed a formula, but if they just distribute it on the numbers in care or on a formula that they currently use, then we should be possibly around about seven million there, about between seven and eight million better off. So that has helped in terms of, but clearly we've got a quarter of a billion pounds that is spent every year on adults and children's social care, a quarter of a billion pounds. Sixty-two per cent of our budgets, our income, goes on paying for social care. And so, you know, it's a welcome seven million pounds, but it's nowhere near what we need. I think also, we looked at that, I mentioned this to somebody, that if we, if we look at, you know, what we would get if we closed every children's centre, every lively, every leisure centre, stopped maintaining our parks and turned off all the lights in the city and didn't have any lights, we'd probably get in around about sixty-seven million in total. So again, it shows you the problems that we face. But what I think we've done as an administration is we've been bold and we've been innovative and we've been imaginative in what we've done as a city. And I think we've got to do more of that. We've got to actually keep continuing to do the things that we have done in the past and continue to make sure that we do in the future. Because I think it's important, and I think it's important to reflect on and remember that the decisions that we make today are decisions that will impact on the city, not just today, but in the years to come. And that leads me, if you like, to two points there, one way, because whilst I welcome the opportunity to work cross-party to present to government, we can't hide from the fact that for 10 years now, just under 10 years, five of those where we were lucky came from the coalition government and then has been continued by this government in terms of continuing to hit this city the hardest out of any other city, hit the hardest because we're the least in terms of bringing in revenue because of the council tax base. And I often always try to, when, you know, and I say this with anger really, when I, a couple of weeks ago, Mayor councillor Makeinson talking about how badly run our council is and was, you know, spoken to him. I remind him and I remind the people that during the period of 1993 to 2000, the Liberal Democrats had a moratorium on council tax of zero per cent, zero per cent, zero per cent. And then in the final year trying to win votes, they cut the council tax by three per cent. And that's about twenty-three million pound a year. But in total, to our base budgets, it's around about £340 million a year that we've lost, that we wouldn't have today. So it's important that we remember what we also inherited, the overspend, the capital culture bill, eighty million in our social care, all of these things, single states equal pay, not tackled, all of these things added to the burden and the finances that we've seen in the video picked up. Bottom line is, is that our council was labelled as a one-star council by the Northern Commission. The famous picture of one bad in this step to know, a lone star state. Under enough time, has our council, under this administration, under the Labour administration, have we ever been challenged for financial mismanagement or incompetence? On the contrary, on the contrary, we've been told by people that we are financially one of the best councils in the country despite the challenges that we face. But it is good, finally, that we actually have now got people talking about working together to solve and help find solutions to the problems that we face. It's good that we are joining to actually say to governments, together with our trade unions, with our voluntary sector, with the Director of Finance, the Chief Executive, go to approach government to say, we now need your help. We desperately now need more help. So that's what today is about, for us to look at those particular strategies and tactics of how we can engage to get them to understand. Because that sixty-four per cent is a £436 million a year loss. And you know, and I know, not me saying it, but other people, reputable people, people who represent people that have no axe to grind have said that Liverpool has been the hardest hit. And for each and every family, it's the loss of £834 a year. And we can also remember and recall, the European racketeers here that talked about the poverty levels in this city and one in three families living in poverty, one in three children living in poverty and universal credit and all the issues that face us on top of the problems that we face as a city, but the people in our communities face every single day. Every single day, behind closed doors, people are making decisions on whether they can buy a school uniform for their kids or feed their kids. And as we head to winter, they'll be deciding whether they keep their house or eat at all. That is the reality of austerity. And it is, without a doubt, a political, a political decision. It is a political choice of this government to make the decisions that they make. So we await to see whether the money that has been promised with austerity being over actually materialises. In the meantime, in the meantime, it's down to us to protect the vulnerable, to protect those who need, but in terms of continue to make sure that we grow the city's economy. And I actually want to just talk to you a little bit about the bold approach that we had as a city. And I often get so angry and so frustrated by people in this city not understanding what it is we've achieved, what it is we've done, how we protect them. If you look at the liveries that have been closed, 480 liveries across the country. If you look at the children's centres, 460 children's centres. If you look at what we've been able to maintain as a result of our strategy of invest-to-own that has brought us to where we are today, that we are still, after nine years, we've lost two and a half thousand jobs. Yes, our streets are always clean, our parks are always well maintained, but we are still fighting, we are still standing, we are still strong, and we are still going to fight and continue to fight for our city. But let's just look at what we've been able to do despite those challenges, despite that housing market renewal fund that being taken away from us. Let's just look at what we've done. Because there's 20,000 kids now in new schools in the city. Be proud of that as an administration, 20,000 kids in new secondary schools. But hopefully, £16 million now we get in council tax a year, £16 million a year more now than we used to get in 2011 as a result of the houses that we've built. In business rates, remember Ed Lane stole in a legal dispute when I became leader and we could become the administration? We're not that. We're only a third of the way through on the development of Ed Lane, and we get now £3.3 million in council tax. In speak retail part and the development of speak retail part and the business growth in speak, we now get seven million pounds, £16 million in terms of the council tax that we now bring in. Finch Farm, I don't remember councillor Makeinson giving me stick over Finch Farm, £3 million clear profit, £800,000 a year that we get by way of material. And yesterday, yesterday, I was happy to receive a cheque from a company that invested in John Lennon Airport and Carl Harton, who bought 45% stake in John Lennon. And the £2 million investment that we made is increased by 10 fold. So yesterday, we received a cheque for £19.5 million, for that £2 million. That's the City Council that is mismanaged and doesn't know what it's doing. £19.5 million that we'll invest to actually try to reduce the cost of children's care by building facilities to get children, housing accommodation that replaces them elsewhere, and building them a gear so that we can actually save money or provide better facilities and better care for our affected children and our children with special needs. That's a fantastic achievement, an amazing achievement. Not only did it protect the airport and safeguard the jobs, imagine Liverpool an international city, a global city without an international airport. Just doesn't bear thinking about. But now we've got one and we've secured those jobs, we've got £19.5 million. But you know what? But the best of it is, we've still got a 10% stake in the airport. So in three years' time, we can cast that in if we want, but we've still got a 10% stake in the airport. So again, it shows if we do things with bold imagination, without actually taking risks, doing ethical investments, we can actually try to help protect the people of this city from the ravages of Tory austerity. That's what we are about. That is what we do. And there'll also be a report that we'll be asking for approval tonight at council meeting, which is about an investment board. And that investment board is going to invest the public sector works long board money to actually bring in a return for this city. Called sensible socialism. It's about using that money, bringing in that money and distributing it in a way that protects services and people from the ravages of austerity. That's all in total, an extra £41 million a year that we are bringing in this administration over what we've done over the last nine years. £41 million and rising, and rising. Paddington Village, when the first phase is complete, will bring in around seven and a half million pound in business rates. Ed Lane is only a third complete, with much, much more to come around Bramley Moor, the developments on the docks from Bramley Moor right the way through to the Garen Festival, gives opportunities for our city not only to grow and create jobs, but to bring in the finances that sustain us going forward. But let's be clear, let's be absolutely clear, that that doesn't give me comfort. That doesn't give me comfort that we're getting that money in to support those services and we're letting the Tory government off the hook for giving us what is rightly ours and what we should have. Because when we put up the council tax by 1% in this city, it brings us in 1.75 million pounds a year. If Surrey do it, if Surrey put up a council tax by 1%, it brings them 87.6 million pounds a year. And they have got the problems that we face. And I also make the point around Bristol, we've got 40,000 more people in this city than Bristol has. And yet Bristol get £38 million a year more than us because of the council tax bands. So we have to make the case to government that we need assistance and we need, we need change. 2020, 21 brings serious problems for us. Not only if we can't manage the funding that we require and we need, potentially, potentially, there is a possibility that the protection that I negotiate, not just for Liverpool, but for the city region, under the no detriment clause of business rates retention and the pilot scheme that would end, potentially that ends. And that would mean that we would also be in seriously difficult position as we lose that protection, I think it's probably around 17 million a year, that we actually get protected by having that no detriment clause. So we do face serious, serious problems. And I'm glad that people are joining together to present our case to central government. And if we stick together, we can also come up with ways of managing, but also ways of persuading them with our MPs in Parliament and with us as leaders and our trade union colleagues, faith leaders, the voluntary sector, taking the case to government. Hopefully, they will listen because we simply have not got now any reserves or anywhere to manoeuvre. And that's why it's important that we have this debate. And that's important why we have this discussion. And everybody in the chamber understands the seriousness of the problem we face. So from my contribution for now, Lord Mayor, that's it. But I'm happy to come back and discuss further after other people have made contributions or answered any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Can I please introduce Mal Clayton, our Director of Finance and Resources, who's going to do the next presentation?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like some of you, this is my first budget at Liverpool City Council. I've been through many budget rounds, including those prior to austerity, when the difficult decisions were invited words of investment money. But I've also been through every round since austerity began. I have to say, this is one of the most difficult years in budgets, I have to say, with a £57 million budget gap to address, unprecedented levels of demand, and huge lines of uncertainty. What I'm going to do is set out for you the position of the council and talk through the facts and figures behind the budget gap. The council spends £1.3 billion of revenue providing services for this city. This is funded from a variety of sources, council tax, business rates, government grants, and fees and charges. Every year, the government publishes figures on the spending power in the council. And this shows that the spending power in Liverpool was reduced by 23.9% since 2010/11, whilst the average for other local authorities is only 12.3%. The council raises £175 million from council tax. Some people think that council tax pays for all the council services. What you can see from those figures, it's a relatively small proportion. However, 77% of the council tax that's raised in Liverpool is from council tax bands A and B, which are always council tax bands. That means that when we increase council tax, a 1% increase in Liverpool equates to 1.75 million. Unlike as the mayor has said, Surrey were with 7.28 million, a huge difference. So not only does the type of pacing affect the levels of council tax, but also the level of exemptions and discounts that we give. And by that, I'm talking single person discount, student discounts, and other support schemes that we give to people in rain hardship. This reduces our council tax base by 40% rather than the English, that English average of 20%. So for example, Liverpool gets an average of £972 per dwelling, whereas if we thought to Surrey again, they'd get £1,995 per dwelling. Now, the council has been fortunate enough to be able to increase business rates in this city by £22 million gross since 2017. As well as that, we've been fortunate enough by the may negotiate in Liverpool being a part of 100% business rate retention scheme. That means we've been able to mitigate some of the reductions and savings we would have had to make. However, it does introduce more risk into the system as a council. It means we're directly impacted by economic downturns and reductions in business rates. The government's intention is to move to a system of business rate retention at a 75% level and to completely remove revenue support grant. The council's already seen an underlying reduction of funding of 63% in real terms. On top of this, a number of other grants have been removed or reduced since 2010. This slide gives you some examples of those grants. And you can see the list is quite extensive. And a lot of those grants are hitting social care. This means that since 2010, we've been able to make £420 million of reductions in spend or increased income through invest-to-own projects, such as the Commercial Property Investment Fund, which is on the agenda later. All this at the same time as we've seen increasing demand for services. For example, lots of the children have increased by 500 or 50% since 2010. So if we approve or if you approve the Commercial Property Investment Fund, what that does is give us the opportunity to generate an income for the council similar to other invest-to-own projects that we've done. And any purchase or subsequent disposal within that fund will be the subject of very close scrutiny and could only be done within the confines of the frameworks that are in the report. But addressing that £57 million budget gap is not going to be an easy task. And the relatively easy ways of balancing the books are not available to us anymore. Over the last 10 years, the council has been able to utilise returns. These now standard £16 million and have been reduced by 36% over the last three years. We've gone as far as we can, especially with the levels of uncertainty increasing. Hence the need to set a one-year budget rather than a three-year budget. There's levels of funding for local government are unknown beyond next year. And the methodology of distribution to individual councils of that funding is also unknown. With the options for how to solve the issue of reducing, difficult decisions are going to need to be taken. As a council, we've got a legislative responsibility to set a balanced budget. And I personally have a statutory responsibility to ensure that happens. Reserves have been used. We've done as much salarmising as we can. And setting an unbalanced budget is not an option. The current position in this financial year is showing a forecast overspend of £15 million. If this does become a reality, we'll need to utilise all of that general fund balance I've just talked about to solve this financial year. If we do that, we'll immediately need to put that money back into reserves. And that allows another £15 million onto the £57. Not only that, but it will open us up to criticism from government and the potential for the commissioners to be brought in. However, you're not alone in this process. We, as officers, will be helping to identify where savings in invest-to-save or earn opportunities can be found. We'll provide you with training and we'll guide you in setting up a check as a process gets involved.
Thank you, Mayor, for that incite into the big picture. The first debate will be regarding Chair's contribution. And that will be, which councillor Rush is still not here anyway, I'll be sure the leaders from the party. And also, can people please indicate if they wish to speak. Chair, can I come back to you, please?
No, I just, the only point I want to make is that, as I said, a lot of us that were at audit and governance when we received the annual audit letter, it was about concerns about the low levels of general reserve balances, at say 16 million. And I think it is just important to point out that where we are with the local tax today in comparison to years gone by, is that the government have the right, if they feel that they are managing the budgets or send a legal process in order to manage the following year, they can immediately send in the commissioners. And the commissioners are auditors who just simply manage the system in the way that they see fit. So they wouldn't be sticking to any principles or values that we have. It would just be simply the easy It would just be simply the easiest way to chop and cut without looking at any opportunities. So I just, I just want to make that particular point that we have a, obviously the section one five, one officer has a judicial duty, a legal duty to set a balanced budget, but suddenly we, as a council, that's otherwise the commissioners come in. And there's a possibility, and I only flunked this, there's a possibility that if we do have to use those three days and we can't manage that twenty-five million pounds overspend for this year in terms of where we are for this year alone, and we have to use it, then that could possibly happen. I'm not putting managers in scare or whatever, but we don't know. We've seen that with the law offices, you've seen that with other authorities, that that's a real danger, that that could happen. But that's because we simply have no income coming into management services that we couldn't be alive. And that is statutory services, by the way. And don't forget, we have to reduce spending statutory services. But that point that I make, that hundred and seventy odd million that we get in council tax is just about covering that in social care spend. And on top of that, we have eighty odd million pounds for children's services. So our council tax is going to nowhere near covering those two areas. That then people are thinking about the libraries, the leisure centre, the parks, the Street Glentons, the Street Lightens, paying for the electricity, running stairs, paying for staff, all of those things that have to come out of our business rates and the other taxes that we have, like the statistics, our archaeology, unknown things. It was just really to emphasize that point.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Can we now take contributions from councillor Richard Camp?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't want anyone to think that anything I say would detract from the seriousness of the situation that this council finds itself in today. I would just say though, in terms of the presentation, that we must also always bear in mind two things when we compare this council with Surrey. Surrey is twice the size of this council in terms of population, et cetera. So you'd expect it to be at least twice, to get at least twice the benefit from a council tax increase as we would. And it's one of the ever prosperous London and the South East councils who are the government after government, but always got the cream. I've been last week in Torbay and four weeks ago I was in Cornwall. And I can assure you that I received, as part of the work I was doing with our leaders there, almost identical presentations. So this isn't just a problem for Liverpool, this is a problem for local government. The biggest problem that I think we have is the fact that we have a totally centralised state in this country. Some say that we are the most centralised state outside, in the EU apart from Malta. Malta disagrees. But the fact is that this council, like every other, suffers from a year by year by year approach from central government to the money that it gets. If we're lucky, we have a comprehensive spending review for three years. And if we're even luckier, that sticks. Because so often we've had three-year comprehensive spending reviews that have then been knocked around with within almost months of them being approved. And my thought to the government is this. If you can approve a forty-year spending programme for your nuclear submarine fleet and if you can agree a sixty-year funding programme to support private sector building nuclear reactors to power fuel, why can't you give us three or five years every time to enable us to plan effectively? Because the fact is that it doesn't matter who it is. If you can't think long term or if it's midterm, you will waste money because you don't know, because you're second guessing what might come along, what you might have to do. And this is probably the most inefficient way of spending taxpayers' money imaginable. And what I'd like to say, which Mayor Anderson has alluded to, is talking about the tax banding situation and the way that it affects the city. I believe this is one of the things we really have to go united on to the government. But this isn't anything new. I'm probably the only one that remembers this, certainly in this council chamber. When I was a lad and came here in nineteen seventy-five, we still had the same basic system that we have today. Two types of property tax, a business property tax. It was always unfair, given the type of business that we have here. And a residential property tax, which was almost as unfair there as it is now with the current rate of banding. And the fact is that with the exception of Margaret Thatcher making two changes to the way we assess what money we should get, one introduced in nineteen ninety and then directed in nineteen ninety-one for ninety-two, we have a system which is not fit for purpose, which no government of any party has been prepared to deal with. And that has a huge effect on this city. You will probably be aware that the council tax levels are set by the district valuing, district valuing, district valuation office at nineteen ninety-one rent levels. Just think about that, nineteen ninety-one. Fifteen per cent of our city didn't exist in nineteen ninety-one, go along the docks. So we have there, not always very prosperous blocks, but some very prosperous blocks indeed, assessed on a rent level, a rental level in nineteen ninety-one, which related to the tower blocks that used to live there. Actually, if there was a revaluation just of the property tax, incompetent and inefficient though it is, that would bring a lot more money in because we would more fairly share the burden. And that is, that's the sort of thing we have to go to the government. And the original plan, my Lord Mayor, was to revalue council tax, the banding levels, every seven years. So it's introduced in nineteen ninety-one, so that was nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and five, two thousand and twelve. We should be on our third revaluation now and that has not happened. Why? Because when they did it in Wales, there were winners and losers. And the winners never too bothered about this, they benefited. The losers paid more council tax and punished the Welsh Assembly and government there. So those are the big overarching issues against which we have to, to plan. The wrong type of tax system delivered in the wrong way over the wrong timescales. Now, I could spend a lot of time going through my ritual attack on my last lady government. I can tell you with some detail that eighty per cent of the tax cuts in the first three years of the coalition, attributed to the coalition, were actually in Gordon Brown's last budget. I can tell you what was in your two thousand and ten manifesto, which would have given more cuts than anything brought in by the coalition. But I don't see the point. We can argue about these things till the cows come home. I've got facts from the Institute of Fiscal Studies, which proves what that point is. But it doesn't take us any further forward today. And that's why I actually think that the most important part of this agenda will be introduced by the chief executive when he talks about alternative ways of doing things. But I want to go to the government, not with a begging bowl. Although we're absolutely sure in agreeing with the mayor that we do need more money. No ifs, no buts, no application, we need more money for the city. But we have to go to them with an offer which they cannot refuse unless they are being totally unreasonable. And I just want to end with one point. Because we've talked about the known unknowns, but there's an unknown unknown as well. The known unknown is the fact that we've got one year, that we don't know what's happening to business rate retention, the whole series of other things which we can not factor into the budget for the year after, what we can think about. What we don't know, and here I have to apologize, is what's going to happen with Brexit. There is no such thing as a good Brexit. Every commentator, every economic commentator, rather, who has looked at this, with the exception of Professor Patrick Minford, who I wouldn't use to count my loose change, has said that any Brexit is bad for this country. And in particular, it will be bad for the poorest areas and the poorest communities. When we sit here this time next year, or perhaps a little later, we might be looking at today as being a teddy bear's picnic, a walk in the park. If we leave the EU, I have no idea how this city will survive. And I have no idea how many of the communities in this city will begin to survive. So I end on that note of caution, but also with a very positive note. I deliberately not wave my arms around and try to politicise this debate. But when we get to the second section, I would look forward to saying that I worked with the Lord Mayor, with every member here, to find the new ways, the interesting ways, the revolutionary ways in the right sense, so that when we go to government, we can say we're making you an offer that you would be insane to refuse. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Camp. Could I invite councillor Tom Jones to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As colleagues may notice, I somewhat lost my voice, so I'll keep my comments extremely brief tonight. I just want to say that we do obviously face an extremely precarious and uncertain future at the moment. As Richard alluded to, Brexit along the way, which could end up being a no-deal Brexit in just six weeks. The effects of global warming and climate breakdown are becoming increasingly apparent. And nearly a decade of austerity really is about to take its toll on many of our communities. So we do need some certainty, and certainty that we can continue to provide the care and health that vulnerable people need in our city. And we need the government to make it very clear that they're not going to let things get any worse for us. They need to recognise that cuts have gone too deep and they're already leading to real suffering. And we don't have to redraw any of our vital services. So we need funding which covers the true cost of the needy Liverpoolers. We also have the challenge of protecting future residents of our city from climate breakdown. The urgency of the climate crisis is finally being grasped by politicians at all level. And now we need to act quickly to start moving towards zero carbon. Maybe the deflation is not enough. If we don't act now, we will fail in our responsibility to future generations. There's a need to be an almost infinite supply of money, both from the government and for this council, for road building and repairs. We now need to see similar financial